All right. I'm gonna take my mask off so I can be heard. We'll go ahead and get our meeting called to order. It is 5:30. I do want to welcome everyone to the City of Tifton Workshop. Just a reminder, we will not actually be voting on any of the items we'll be discussing this evening, but it's just for discussion purposes only. And before we actually get our meeting going, I'd like to call on Pete to introduce some new members of the City of Tifton family.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Council. Chief and the two officers will come forward. I wanted to introduce you to the newest officers to the department. With everything going on today, ABAK, the Academy, they're not doing ceremonies anymore because of the distancing, of course. So, they don't have a chance to oath. So what Chief did today with the shifts and departments, we all took part. They did their oath, raised their hand today, become, became a City of Tifton police officer. So I wanted you to formally meet them, and I like to continue to do that so the community could obviously know the faces. We're gonna get more and more into introductions into the zones, and that'll come at a later date. But Chief, you wanna do introduction, please?
Yes. Good evening. I have with us Ariel Hart and Matthew Layfield. They both graduated from the Academy this past week. This Academy, they've done a little bit different because of the COVID-19. They actually had to go to school Monday through Saturday for 10 hours a day. Because the Academy started late, so in order to graduate on time, they had to do 60 hours a week in order to catch up. And they've done their firearms, used the force, they've done the classroom on Georgia Law and driving. And I'd like to welcome them. They've done a real good job in class, and they've been a good addition to the department. And at a time right now where people are saying, "I don't think I wanna be in law enforcement." I don't know if I wanna be in law enforcement. They stepped up to the challenge, and they wanted and accepted it to make a difference in our community, and I'm glad that they chose Tifton to make the difference and to be here with us as we protect our city. I'd like to congratulate Ariel Hart and Ariel was in corrections, and she came. Matthew went to ABAK, went through, got his criminal justice degree, and he also was working at Harvest Supermarket. And so, now they're here, and they're part of us.
Wonderful. We welcome you both to the City of Tifton. I'm gonna give you a round of applause.
Don't let y'all meet one more, but she was a little hyper, so we'll bring her in. Another meeting, Mia, our new canine. She got out, and she's a little hyper, and she thought she was pouring the words.
Okay. Well, we look forward to meeting Mia. It's very nice to meet you both. Thank you so much for, one, going into this profession. We're very, very proud of you. And then, number two, for joining the City of Tifton family. We're just honored to have you both and look forward to working with you and getting to know you. And if there's anything you need at all, you let me know, and I'll let Pete know, and he'll take care of it, okay? Okay, thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have one more, too, because this is another special position and hire. I would like to formally introduce Maria Amber Lulia to you. Maria is going to be the administrative coordinator upstairs. She will be obviously involved in you and with phone calls and the customers and the community. She's gonna be helping Jessica as backup with the city clerk duties, and she's gonna be involved in some other things as well. She was the assistant clerk in Ray City, so she comes who is brand-new this week as well, and we're looking forward to get her on board and get her started. So wanted to show, so she's been studying your names and faces, so tonight we'll start with the full introduction. So you'll see more Maria very soon.
Wonderful, welcome Maria. We're glad to have you, too. So we'll keep you running the podcast. Glad to have you. We're happy with you and getting to know you better, too. So, thank you. Thank you, thank you. It's exciting. All kinds of good things going on at the city. All right, we do have a copy of the agenda here on the podium. If anyone does not have one and would like to grab one to follow along with us. The first item on that agenda is the approval of the agenda, and that will be the only thing that we'll actually be voting on this evening. So I'll take a motion that in fact that we approved tonight's agenda.
So moved.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, excellent. All right, now we have a presentation. I'm gonna call on our friend, Mr. Jason Bischoff from YMCA. So Jason, I'll turn it over to you and let you run with it. If you'd like to remove your mask, I know it's hard to talk, and you help yourself because we are distance, so you're good.
I do appreciate that. Thanks so much. Again, my name is Jason Bischoff with the CEO of the Tift Area YMCA. I'm so glad to be here today to talk about recreational sports as far as what the YMCA does. I've got a presentation as well. I present, if anybody would like, Kirsten right here has a copy of it by paper. If you'll look at that, also up on the screen as well, should be able to see. So I'd like to pull up at this time, and this is just talking about recreation sports here with the City of Tifton and the YMCA. First, I'm gonna talk about a few things. I'm gonna talk about what the YMCA does, what we are, and then also talk about our recreational sports, what we do, and then what we have for the future as well. So we'll start off that. As we start off, we'll talk about, get this here to work. If I get to work correctly. And also, I want to recognize, we do have eight board members here as well from the Tift Area YMCA here representing the Y today. We're very supportive of what they do with this. Our programs, services, and initiatives enable kids to realize their potential. At the Tift Area YMCA, we're so big on with kids, working with kids to be the future generation because that's what they are. And so, we want to prepare teens for college, offer ways to families to have fun together. Coaching at the Tift Area YMCA with your kids is so important. It builds relationship with your child, but also builds relationship with other kids in the community as well. And so, that's one thing that we offer is a fun time with families together. With that, through coaching and many other aspects that we have. Let you empower people to be healthier in spirit, mind, and body. Also prepare people for the employment. Something that Tift Area YMCA that I take a pride in is the fact of, we have summer camp counselors this year. Fifteen percent of our counselors are involved, were enrolled in the program when I first started the program here at the YMCA through our summer camps. Thirty, or seventy-five percent of our employees that work in our sports programs were raised at the Tift Area YMCA doing sports in this community. That's important, maybe, because I want to see our kids in the workforce. I want to see our kids make a difference in their communities. And so, that's one thing that we like to offer is preparing kids for employment in the future. Help foster nationwide service ethic as well is what things we do at the Tift Area YMCA. We have two locations at the Tift Area YMCA. One on Carpenter Road is our main campus, 1657 Carpenter Road, which has our gym and our other facilities there as well. It's located there. Our second location, which is at Hunt Park, which is 1823 Westover Road, is 14 acres there at the Tift Area YMCA. You can see on there is, of course, our soccer fields, our T-ball fields, our flag football, cheerleading, things like that, or house out there at the Westover Road at Hunt Park that we have. As I talked about, we're gonna have many different things that we're gonna talk about today as far as what the Y does, our future in the Y, what things we got, also the sports we got. But I'm always one, I like to have other people talk about the Tift Area YMCA other than me. So I've got some folks that we recorded a couple of years ago talking about the YMCA and what it means to them.
One of the most profound things that I love about the Tift Area YMCA is not only do they offer athletics, but they also offer other programs.
I'm with MEMS Kids, and we're involved with the Tift Area YMCA with their free swim program in the summer. MEMS Kids partnered with Tift County Housing Authority, which allowed five kids to take free swim lessons.
I'm involved with a Food For Thought program at the Tift Area YMCA. I love the Food For Thought program that the Tift Area YMCA does every summer. We are actually putting food in the hands of kids every day.
Tift Area YMCA has a large impact on the community with their partnerships. They also partner with MEMS Kids with our Stay In School Rally every year.
I'm involved with the Tift Area YMCA through the Y Christmas Program. A few years ago, I became involved through the Sports and Program Director, Jason Bischoff, and I can tell you, I know the impact it has on these children and their families. It also has an impact on the people that get to actually adopt the children at Christmas and go out and shop for them.
It helps you become better and a stronger person and a survivor that you could help someone else.
I'm Stephanie Morrow.
I'm Mary Dare Day.
My name is Ernestine Tolliver.
My name is Elsie Tolliver.
I'm MJ Hall.
I'm Kirsten McKelpin, and this is my Y.
This is our Y. As we talked about here a few minutes ago, the different ones that mentioned, we have our Y Christmas within the community. We, every year at Christmas time, we provide 130 to 150 kids with Christmas that weren't able to get Christmas. We have sponsors come in and be involved in that and give to this so we can have that many kids sponsored. Our summer feeding program, each and every day in our community during the summertime, of course, when COVID's not here, we're able to feed kids in the community, 500 kids a day this YMCA feeds in this community. And there are different sites all over the place as far as with Puckett Park, Tift Avenue Church of God, Peterson Apartments, Gio Bailey, Hill &amp; D's Apartments, Travelers Rest Missionary Baptist Church, Springfield Baptist Church, First United Methodist and First Baptist, some of the sites that we feed in the summertime, 500 kids a day. Throughout the school year and after-school program, we have two sites, which are, as mentioned, Travelers Rest and Springfield Baptist Church, where we feed kids, about 40 to 60 kids each and every day. Also work on with homework, work on different things with kids as far as activities outside. A lot of funds we do in the after-school program that we have as well through our feeding program. And one thing I do want to mention about our feeding program, as I mentioned before, it's so important to train kids to be our future. I remember at after-school program that we had, if a child does very well, they increase their letter grade at school. If they do good in, or think for things wise at the school, what they do in the after-school program, we actually offer scholarships to play sports at the YMCA. I had one child that was involved in our after-school program, always did well, got good grades, and so he's able to get a scholarship to play sports at the Tift Area YMCA. Well, his second year, he was coming with us, and I was talking to that after-school program, got a little older than what he can be involved in the after-school program. I said, "Hey, just so you know, if you need it, that scholarship's available because all you've done with the YMCA, I want you to be involved in the Y in sports as well." He said, "Mr. Jason," he said, "this year I was able to get a job at the, from, through what the after-school program taught me, things I had all got a job this year. I can pay my own, and hopefully this year I'll be able to cover somebody else this scholarship to pay as well." And so, that's what this after-school program is about. That's what our feeding program is about, to make kids our future in what they are and work with that. So we have those programs as well. The Learn To Swim program, we're trying to get all second graders approved where we can get them in the water for water safety. Because water drowning is a bad thing in our community, is something that we have problems with. So we're looking at with YMCA, we work with Annabelle Clark, Lynn Lastinger, and Gio Bailey to bring the kids from their school to the Y for free and teach them how to have water safety, how to get to the side, how to swim, how to be involved and make a difference whether they do fall in the water or that they don't drown. Working also with Omega School and J.T. Reddick in this upcoming fall year as well to do that as well. So we've got five schools we're working with to the Learn To Swim program that's free for kids to come to. A few other things we have is the father-daughter dance. In our community, we have 800, 900 dads and daughters involved in this. This is another time, I can remember before I came working in the YMCA, the father-daughter dance was something that I took my daughter to. But I can remember that first year when I was looking at going to the father-daughter dance with my daughter, my life was so busy, had a lot of things going on, the job that I had and working with, and my daughter really wanted to go to the father-daughter dance. You know, my friends are going, "I wanna go, Dad." Well, I said, "All right, I'm gonna get it, I'm gonna get it." I hadn't bought the tickets yet. My wife came to me and said, "If you don't buy tickets for your daughter, I'm gonna take, Grandpa's gonna take her." So you need to take her to this thing. So I went and bought tickets to her, I took her to this. This is something, you know, dads are so busy in their life, but this is a night they can spend time with their daughter. This is a time they can spend time, spend a quality time with their daughter. And so, my daughter's 16 years old now, is still involved in going to the father-daughter dance, thank goodness, thank the Lord. But I love that, the fact that we spend time together doing those things. So that's what the Y does, brings families together. The Polar Bear Plunge, we're able to raise funds this past year, $15,000 to go into other charitable organizations in this community. Ten of the organizations able to raise money for them to be involved in. And so, that's what we can do at the YMCA. The Live Strong, as you heard them talking about, is something if you survive cancer, it's how to healthy get back going again as far as with the Live Strong program. Some of the things that we do at the YMCA, also got now with all our spring sports. We have our winter sports, our spring sports, and our fall sports we're involved with. With our spring sports, we offer basketball ages 14 to 16, T-ball ages three to six, soccer three to 17. We also have our travel All-Star soccer, which ages seven to 17. And something that's neat, our basketball program, our 14 and 16-year-old basketball program, and even our younger program, a couple of years ago, when the Tift County won the state championship, we had seven players on that team that were involved in playing at the Tift Area YMCA playing sports, teaching them how to play sports, how to be young men and be involved in that. So I know we're a small part, I know the great coaches we had and things of that nature as well that we did, but it's nice to be involved in that at the Tift Area YMCA to do that. Where seven kids off that state championship team were involved in sports at the Tift Area YMCA. Also with soccer, as you look at, we have soccer at different ages, three to 17. We have Spanish League on Sundays, it's adults that we have, that we have coaches that come out of there and be able to teach our kids how to play soccer in our community. So see, our travel All-Star team, it's something we're working on to build for the future. This tournament right here, you can see they were up there, this was in Tifton. We had All-Stars travel from all, Wake Cross, from Thomasville, from Albany, from Moultrie, come here to play travel soccer. Because that's, we're getting to the point where now we got All-Stars, we can do that. So our guys won first place that year in our All-Star tournament. Good kudos to Tifton for doing that, but it's nice to see soccer and sports coming to Tifton, to more sports. That's our spring sports. Summer at the Y, we have our sports camps. We have basketball, baseball, cheer, soccer camps that we offer in the summertime. We also have a summer camp where normally, under normal circumstances, we have anywhere from 100 to 130 kids involved in our programs in our summer camp. That's a time to mentor kids, to make a difference in their lives. There's a lot of them facing different difficulties in life. There's kids facing divorce, there's kids facing problems in our community, things they're facing. We're able to sit down with devotion time, with time with these kids, and work and talk through these things through our summer camps that we have. We also have our aquatics program, as we talked about earlier. Our swim lessons are there for toddlers to adults. It's hard to believe this, but there's a lot of adults in this community that can't swim. And so, at the YMCA, we offer for children from toddlers all up to adults for swim lessons at the Tift Area YMCA, because we don't want to see anybody drowning in our community. We want to make sure that we have all people learn how to swim. In our, oops, went too far there. In our fall sports, we have soccer ages three to 17, T-ball ages three to six, flag football ages three to 13, and cheerleading ages three to 13 as well. We do all these sports in the fall, and it's kind of neat to see, we've had, I know, two players that went to Georgia Southern and Georgia Tech that played flag football at the Tift Area YMCA since I've been here, and even before that as well. It's nice to see make a difference as far as going into other collegiate athletes as well doing that, and many people have been involved in sports in this community that start out at the Tift Area YMCA. They get their first memories playing sports at the Tift Area YMCA at three years old. And we want to keep fostering that good fellowship as far as having kids make a difference in their lives starting at a young age. All right, our winter sports, we have basketball ages eight to 13. You can see in the picture up here, Dr. Hellman, this past winter sports that we had in 2019, all the kids that were involved in that basketball, as far as we're offered opportunity, have a basketball university. Dr. Hellman went for eight weeks and worked with kids in our community on the fundamentals of how to play basketball. And have a doctor come in, and loves basketball like he does, and offer to pay for all the kids being involved in the sports program that we had that were involved in basketball, it'll go in his camp. That was huge for kids to make a difference in their lives, mentoring them, but also make a difference for sports and to grow them to be young adults in this community that make a difference. All right, something else that we do at the Tift Area YMCA for adults, and we have different adult legs we have, but this is our tour to Tifton we do every year. We have had our 10th year of doing this. Last year in 2019, had over 225 riders this past year. And them riders from all around the five different states surrounding us as well were involved in this, in this tour to Tifton, traveling here to Tifton to be able to ride, bike rides, either 11 miles all the way up to 100 miles. And I don't know about you guys, but if you've been involved in 100-mile bike ride, that's a long ways, that's something I don't want to do, but if somebody else in here likes to do that, I'm all for you. The proceeds benefit the Tift Area YMCA for scholarships and for underprivileged youth in our community that we raise through this, through that program. Looking to the future, we're talking about something the YMCA does in sports, we talk about things we do in our community, but also looking for the future. We got a few things coming up. We had a pickleball tournament for adults that we did this past year anyways, and we're looking at doing it again this year. We have the YMCA's in our area, gonna do tournaments when we're traveling, planning all different places. We had a pickleball tournament here that turned out a lot of folks to be involved in that, looking for that in the future as well. Triathlon and 5K run that we've done, that we're looking to do in September as well. Volleyball tournaments in our community, we have a sandlot volleyball court behind the YMCA where we're hoping to hold some volleyball tournaments that we're gonna have. And then also, our Hero 5K Run we're doing as well. And also, we have an aeronasium at the YMCA where our pickleball tournaments are at, things like that. 20,000 square feet of open, we call it aeronasium because it's got a roof and everything else over it, but it's all open. People can be involved in those. And so, it's hoping something we can do in the future to increase what we do at the YMCA. Looking to the future as well, something else we'd like to have in Tifton is more swim meets. We had a facility at Hunt Park with 14 acres of pecan orchards. We have parking lots where we can do more swim meets in this community. That's something in the future we'd like to expound on even more that we can do that. And so, one thing we're looking for is to have more swim meets in our community. We already host one already with a high school, like to host more as well. Also like to do is for our Learn To Swim program, as we talked about this, we've got three schools already that were involved in, with second graders in the community, teaching and learning swim. We're expanding two in the fall. I'd like to get to all the elementary schools in our community to be able to have a Learn To Swim program at our YMCA pool. And of course, it's free for kids to come to with our Learn To Swim program. Another thing to look into the future, travel baseball. This is something that I look around the communities that we're involved with, I look in Moultrie and Baldasta, I look in even Cordial, they have these big travel baseball that come to their community for two, three-day tournaments. This is something I could see in our future at the YMCA. With a partnership, and this is something that I want to talk about that we do through the YMCA, partnership is so key to what the YMCA does. The partnership we have with the churches, if the after-school programs we run, the summer camps we run are all off-campus. None of them are at our sites. They're at churches, they're at local organizations, all the facilities that we do as far as our feeding programs, they're off-site. None of them is at the YMCA. We have folks that help staff those, volunteers, but also churches and community organizations are involved in helping us do that. If we can do something with travel baseball, I am looking at doing a partnership with someone that's already here in our community to do travel baseball at the YMCA, to improve our fields, to make it better, where we can have these things, but come into our community and bring people into our community. That's what the YMCA goal would have to have us do as far as bringing things into the Tift Area, even to Tifton anyways. So, any questions you guys got for me or anything I can answer for you guys for the partnership or you may have? I'll be glad to answer any questions I can. Yes, ma'am. We do, we do a lot of the, we do a lot of the YMCA, and so I want to make sure that I present that to everybody in a short manner that I possibly could. I know it's a short time.
Do you introduce your board members? I think that would be, I think we all know each other, but.
If we can have our board stand up, the Tift Area YMCA board, if y'all stand up for me. Tyler Riddle, here's our CVO at the YMCA. Jay Carmichael. CVO, sorry, yeah, CVO, that's right. CVO. Jay Carmichael, he's the board. Todd Garner. Kirsten McKelpin. Patricia Brooks. Chad Van Orman. Tony McBrer. And where's brother, Mr. Joe? Joe Grater, I missed him there. Joe Grater, they're all our board members that are here today representing with the YMCA.
Well, thank you for what you do and the service that you provide to the community and your service to the board at the YMCA, so thank you for that. Gentlemen, do y'all have any questions or any comments or any thoughts about the presentation? Questions of Jason, questions of any of the board members, Wes?
Yeah, Jason, you know, we, our community is comprised of a vast socioeconomic backgrounds. You know, you made the comment to scholarships or whatnot. About how many scholarships do you guys give out on an annual basis or whatnot?
On annual basis, we get anywhere out, just with sports, are you talking about summer camp or the membership or?
Yeah, yeah, membership sports. I mean, I guess you could, if you add a number for each one of those, I'd be.
I don't, I don't, I can get them for you if you don't want any information for you. We give out a lot of scholarships in our community, but for sports, I know we give out anywhere from 100 to 150 out per year in our sports program, our summer camps that we do, give to kids in the community. Now, with a partnership, hopefully they'll give you more than that as well. And that's something that we look to the future to give out more scholarships to help kids in our community, because as we, I was the one that actually been involved in starting the first after-school program here at the YMCA. And to see the need in our community on different sides of Tifton is so important that there is need, that the kids that want to play sports just have the means to play those sports. And so, we offer scholarships for kids in our community because I want to see every kid, let's put it this way, I have only turned down probably two in the last two years of ones that weren't able to qualify for sports. If you apply to YMCA, we'll have you play in sports. If you need it, we'll get it for you.
I think it's, it's, I guess, quite funny that you mentioned the word partnership. I mean, there's no mistake that what's been going on in with our community or whatnot, we need to look for a partnership when it comes to the recreation aspect of it. And not only that, you know, I think as an elected official, we are all tasked, tasked with the, with the job to make sure that every red cent of tax that we receive from our taxpayers have a direct benefit to the taxpayer himself or herself. You know, with the range that you guys provide services and outreach programs for, from three to literally to the grave almost.
That's right.
You know, makes that a direct benefit for pretty much everyone that would, you know, would be a taxpayer in our community. You know, the, Mayor, I, I don't know about you, but I would love to explore the idea of a city partnership with the YMCA. I think we would probably need to form a committee to do that.
Well, and I, you know, I agree completely with what you say as far, you know, with the benefit for the citizens and making sure that we are as frugal and as efficient as possible with tax dollars. I think there's a lot of opportunity as we look to the future. I think recreation and services in that vein, as we have known in the past, are changing. And with programs that the schools provide and churches provide and that type thing, I think there's, I just think there's a lot, like you said, a lot of good opportunity for us to, to explore partnerships. And I think the YMCA is somebody that this organization would like to sit at the table and have a conversation with if the YMCA is willing to do that. And I think we work very efficiently and well with committees.
Yes.
We have to be very careful to make sure that we don't have more than certain numbers of council members involved, otherwise we've got a quorum, and now we have a meeting, and so we, we want to be very respectful of that. With the council's permission, I'd really like to appoint a committee. And I'd like, I know Wes, you've been very interested in recreation, so I'd love for you to serve on that. And I'd really like to have MJ serve on that as well, MJ, if you would be willing to serve, to just sit at the table with you and with some of your board members potentially, and let's, let's just look at options, if that's something that the council would be willing to support. Would y'all be okay with that and, and let them?
Yeah, what I'd, what I'd like to hear, you know, if there was a partnership, what, what kind of things are you looking to expand? If you had a partnership, more funds, what's the next thing that you're looking at, that your long-range plans to expand into?
No problem. As I mentioned in there, in our talk a few minutes ago, that travel baseball would be one thing that I like to expand on. That's one thing that I know this community, if I can build a partnership with other people in the community that are already doing this, to work out where we could have better fields to do these things, to expand our field area, to expand what we do at the pool, to have more kids involved in our, our Learn To Swim program. I also like to expand some of our adult programs that we do as well, to be involved I also like to expand some of our adult programs that we do as well, to be involved with folks in our community. Something else I'd like to see is a, as we talked about, the swim meets, to have bigger swim meets. We have a great facility out there already where people have, because if you see swim meets in town, a lot of times they have, you know, tents and stuff like that up there close to roads. I like to have it where you can have out there at the pecan trees, people have the parking lots full with them things. So, if we can expand and improve our facilities to make where we can have these things at our, and do what we do as far as expanding those things. But there's some, a few things I'd like to expand on that. But also, even with our sports, I mean, right now, we are renting other facilities just to do our basketball programs. We're running, have partially other facilities, churches, the school system to do these things. We have a 20,000 square foot building sitting out there that we can enclose and do things, do sports there, do a summer camp there. We've grown into two facilities with our summer camp. I'd love to go to three, you know, still be of all the partnerships we're already involved with, but also expand at Hunt Park those things and do those things better out there as well.
Because what I'm looking for is, is expanding the number of participants. I mean, travel baseball is fine. I don't know how many people play on a traveling baseball team, but that doesn't give me a lot of, I mean, that, not a big deal to me.
Yeah.
If you've got 100 kids now, how do you get to 300 kids? What are you going to do to bring in that, those extras? That's, it's numbers to me.
Yes.
Quality is one thing, and you'll get to that, but it's, it's how do you get the numbers of our residents? Where anybody that wants to play, can play, and get involved.
That's right.
That's something that was mentioned before, with more dollars involved, that also have more people getting scholarships to play. Because you have that, you've got opportunities. We don't have so limited dollars we can spend towards scholarships. That would bring more people into ball and play as well that may not afford to, but through dollars, we can do that. We can actually involve in that, having more kids play in those as well. The travel, that was something I'm looking at for bringing people to Tifton, Georgia. I love when we can bring our All-Star Soccer here and win a tournament in Tifton that we want folks from all different areas to come here. If we do a two, three day tournament to bring more people here as well, that's the reason the travel ball was, but yes.
And I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
The more people that come in, obviously, the...
That's right.
From a tourism and, you know, head in there.
Just a step further, I think the council can focus is on to something very, very important. And I know Wes, we've talked about it, but two things. Number one, the fields in the inner city aren't really utilized, and that's kind of a general statement. There's some things and some activities, but what I think I'm hearing is almost like grassroots type of recreation where, you know, from inner city that the kids could get their, find the bicycles, they could walk there. If one kid's on one field and another kid's on one field, they could watch more participation. Interested in sports they never played before, but I think hearing your comments, raising the elevation to those that could, you know, just do sports. And again, grassroots, the way, you know, a lot of people were raised on the ball fields. So, one, some of the modern day, it's not a flaw, but all the complexes start to go way out in the outskirts. And that is something that we have to focus on. And I commend you for thinking along the lines because bringing things in and looking at the YMCA changes the dynamics of recreation. So, that's where you get the kids that aren't able to play, don't have transportation, or in certain areas that could just walk to the ball fields or be right in the inner city. It really creates a dynamic effect on that, increasing.
We can't have, that's right, we can't have location of the kids and transportation being an issue.
Right.
I mean, we gotta, you know.
Right. Well, that's the good thing about creating this committee is that it creates a committee for dialogue to happen so these pros and cons can be discussed. So, you know, we're not going to be able to answer everything today, but I mean, I think that the being, the committee is being created gives us an opportunity to explore this idea and to, you know, possibly answer your questions and go from there.
And I do think that it would be helpful as, you know, if you think of any questions or comments or any specifics, email those to MJ and Wes, and they'll certainly take those to the table and have that conversation. But I think we're looking at creating a hybrid. I think we're looking at something that's different, that's new, that's beneficial, that is exceptional. And with the, I think with the quality of the YMCA as an organization and the city of Tifton as an organization, to be able to sit down and have that conversation and just throw out ideas and brainstorm and bring that back to each organization on how we could become, you know, potential partners and benefit the most people. And so, if, like I said, if you would be willing to serve, MJ and if Wes, if you would be willing to serve, I think the two of you would do very well to represent the city in having that conversation.
This, this is a quality of life, I think. It's kind of, you heard me comment last year about the theater.
Right.
The theater might not pay for itself, but it's, it's a thing to have if you're going to have a community. There's things you need to provide.
Right.
Having the YMCA and partners will, that way at least it does take a burden off of city taxpayers. But we still need to be involved because it's just, to have a good community, the city needs to be invested and taxpayers invested.
Right.
But not fully. This, this makes it the best for both, so.
Right.
And you, all ages of taxpayers receive a direct benefit from, from...
Just for clarification, you don't have to be a member of the Y, right?
That's right.
To participate in this.
That's correct.
Try to make sure we clarify that. And this is not a competition between Tiff County Recreation and YMCA. This is enhancing quality of life.
Absolutely, absolutely.
It's very important, there's probably some decisions if you all want to do. Is there a specific timeline that you want to stay within, at least for discussions? How do you want to move this forward?
I don't know if I want to put a timeline on it. I think we can, we can have those discussions, and then once they work themselves out, then we can, you know, maybe bring a committee decision back to council as a joint presentation with the city committee and the YMCA again and say, hey, these are some of the things that we've worked out. And I'm not saying drag this thing off for a long time, but begin working immediately.
I would think within the next maybe 60 to 90 days, you should be able to have plenty of opportunities to meet, and maybe even a couple of meetings, and, and let us kind of think through the questions and present those to y'all. And then, and then maybe in the next 60 days or so, come back and just keep us updated.
Yeah, another day at least within the next 90 days.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sitting here saying that, I thought you guys were at like next meeting or something.
No. No, you've got to, the meeting after that, no. But, but yeah, I think that it would, I think that y'all would, would serve that, that you two gentlemen would serve very well on that. So, if that sort of 90-day timeframe, at least to have the discussion and come up with some ideas would be good, then, then let's, let's sort of shoot for that. But y'all know what to do. I mean, I know you're not going to, you're not going to drag this out, so, okay? Are y'all good with that?
Yes.
Is your board good with that, you think?
Yes, they are.
I mean, my expectation would be, is this doable or is...
Oh, possible.
Oh, yeah.
We can kind of get to that point of do we go forward or just it doesn't make sense?
Right.
Then we've got time after that to flesh out all the details.
Right.
Got you.
But you're right, from a quality of life standpoint, Jack, you are absolutely correct. You know, when we recruit business and industry, you know, we always make sure we, you know, we bring them downtown to show that, you know, the quality of arts and culture. You know, it's important to have a good school system. It's important to have that, that high quality of life so that, so that when these industries locate here, they're comfortable and they, you know, they bring people in and families relocate here and stay here.
That's right.
And so, that's very important. So, so I'll turn it over to you gentlemen and the board, and Jason to you to coordinate whatever needs to happen from this point. And, and just know that we appreciate very much what you do and look forward to a conversation.
And with a partnership, thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
Questions for me?
Any of the board members or Jason? Y'all good, Johnny?
I'm good.
Okay. MJ? Y'all have your conversations later. Okay, Jack, you got, okay. All right.
Thank you so much. I appreciate y'all's time.
Thank y'all very much. Thank y'all for coming this evening. You're welcome to stay. It's very exciting. But if you need to run out, I understand too.
Don't run out or open the same time.
Thank y'all so much for being here tonight. We appreciate it. All right. That was a good presentation. Very good. The next item on our agenda is the, the review of, or to discuss creating the resolution approving the board appointment policy. And Jessica's put all that in our packet. I know we've talked about it at several of the workshops and, and just creating sort of a guideline or a baseline to be able to put new board members in place for all the various boards and commissions and authorities and the volunteers that we depend upon to, to work forward with our city progress. Pete, did you have something you wanted to add to that?
I don't. We made all the changes and suggestions. We put that in there. We do have pending board members, so again, we, we probably missed something and we could change that as we go on. But this is the tool and the guide that you wanted, so if you already, we'll kick it into action. Follow the steps. We do have a couple, again, appointees that we need to, we need to vet.
Yes.
And test this, and I think we're ready for it if you are.
Are y'all, even though we're not voting on this this evening, we'll do the resolution at the next meeting, but are y'all okay with them moving forward with having a conversation with these potential board members? You know, that was to be the staff liaison and potentially one of us and that kind of thing. So, if y'all are okay with moving forward on that, we'll authorize Pete to, to go ahead and do that, and then we'll create the resolution or approve the resolution at the next meeting. So, everybody good on that?
Okay.
Okay, perfect. Excellent.
Thank you.
All right, do you want to go ahead and talk about the, the next item on the agenda, which is the service agreement, proposed service agreement with Charles Abbott Associates?
I will, thank you. Back in February, we, we talked about building inspections and Charles Abbott Associates, who do business for us right now. About three weeks ago, we had a inspector actually tender his resignation to us, so we are down to one inspector. I still believe that this is the right time and the right thing to do for this portion of our service. Again, we don't lose any control. They work directly for us, but the, the level and experience they bring to community development, I think, would be welcomed. And this would help, obviously, Danny and John with the overall impact. There would be some savings on the city side because they do, they do charge based off of the inspection. Again, it's, it's all in contract and in language, and I would suggest that we try, you know, one year and see how it works. But I think the benefits would certainly outweigh what we would, would be, you know, looking at as far as this. This is a positive for the community. We're not trying to change anything. We're not trying to do anything outside of just provide a great service. And this company, again, like I said, they do work for us already, and they just are up to speed on who we are, Georgia laws, and they are the next town over, so it just makes perfect sense.
Is there any way to gauge the quality of service? Is there any type of follow-up after someone? And maybe this is something we could implement just to kind of give us measurable results, you know, with a follow-up survey or just a phone call to say, what was your experience? And, and did we meet your expectations or did we fail? What were the challenges? Those, those kinds of questions. Is it possible to do that so that we could have something to measure against?
I think so. Danny has tried actually a survey, and we have a lot of constructive individuals that want to give feedback that are from out of town and say, wow, this is great here. You know, we experienced a complete difference. And it depends who you talk with, and, you know, we're the, we, we're compared to a lot of other cities, and then some bad, some good. But I think Charles Abbott, the what they bring to the table and the level of professionalism, I think that would be very welcoming to say, how, how was it? I mean, you know, welcome to Tifton, number one, but number two, how did we do on our services? Did we, did we glide it through?
Right.
Or, you know, have you seen an improvement? But I, I think, I don't see...
Is that something y'all could work on to, to help us gauge?
I don't see why we couldn't do that.
Okay. I think that would be important because so many times we'll, you know, we'll implement programs or we'll do things, and then we never kind of follow back up to see, how are we doing with this change? Was it the right thing? Was it not the right thing? So, I, I think that would be important if, if y'all could work on that and put that...
And this, and I think you're right, this is purely for the business segment. And this is not for, you know, city. But this is purely for the business segment.
That's right.
Trying to improve our processes and our experience when someone does business in the city.
And I know, you know, I know we can't, we're not going to make everybody happy, I understand that, and that's not the goal. The goal is to make sure we're, we're operating efficiently and effectively and hearing the needs of the businesses and responding to that and, and making sure that we're, you know, we're consistent in our message. Because the, you know, the goal for everyone is to say, you know, I want to go do business in the city of Tifton. They handle things professionally, and so, so if we can come up with some way to measure that, I think that would be helpful. All right, any other questions or comments for, for Pete or for John or for Danny in this department? All of that information is in your, in your package. You can see the copy of the, the potential contract and review that. So, any comments, questions? You good?
Yep.
All right, excellent. Next item on our agenda will be, let's see, under new business is the review of the digester cleanout bids received. Jeff, you and Pete going to handle that, or? Jeff, is that you?
That's me.
That's you? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We recently, well, actually, it's been two months ago now, bid out the digester project at the wastewater plant. This digester has not been cleaned out in probably 30 years since it was built, causing some problems with treatment, not a lot. We are able to keep it clean somewhat. It's got an aeration basin, and I think y'all have got some pictures of it.
We do.
It gets a bad sometimes. The solids build up in there, and it's 14 feet deep, and it's almost full. We, we've been trying to figure this out and bid it the right way for the last two years. I've been working together on it with engineers. The best way to do it is, is to clean it out, run it through a belt press. Belt press actually squeezes all the water out with some polymer, or 90% of the water out, and then it would be hauled to the landfill. This is a very good project. It's needed. It's, it's got to be done, basically. But we're recommending going with Sinogro for the low bid of $594,029.
And that is in our packet, so.
It is, it is, and this is part of the GFA grant.
Yes.
Okay.
That you allowed us to move forward on. So, very great project. This is what it's for. It is in the city of Tifton's name, and this is something that, that we need to do for our wastewater plant.
Excellent, okay. Any questions concerning those bids?
I mean, 30 years is a long time. Not, not that I care about 30 years from now, because I probably won't be here, but what's, what's the plan for not waiting another 30 years before we do?
The plan would be to do it within 15 years. 15 to 20 is about the right average. And we'll be able to judge more than, we've been running it for six years now, and it's building up pretty fast. And we can monitor it better once we get it empty and gauge how many years to actually wait before it's done again.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you, Jeff. Any other questions before we move on to the next item? All right, while you're here, do you want to talk about the 2020 street resurfacing bid?
Yes, ma'am. As you all know, we went over the list. We, we all talked about it, and we have bid out the El Mig for this year. Got some really good numbers. East Coast asphalt come in at 530,835,33, which is almost $100,000 cheaper than any of the other bidders. I've done some research. I, I broke everything down, looked at the numbers. Where they were cheaper at was the actual price of the asphalt. They have built a asphalt plant, East Coast has, in Sycamore, Georgia, which is very close to here. It's the closest one, so I'm pretty sure that's, the hauling is how they can deliver it that cheap. We all recommend them. We're going to have a pre-construction conference with them once it's approved, and we're going to have tickets for every load dumped, and we're going to inspect it and make sure it's right. So, I, I feel good with the bid and am recommending going with East Coast asphalt.
I, I would tell you two things. Number one, we're, we're in the process of doing all the pre-work on all the El Mig roads. We're fixing curbs, we're fixing tree roots, we're pulling out old lines to meter, so we're doing all that pre-work now, so we will, we'll be ready for that. But number two, I will state that we did, the city of Tifton did not have a good experience with East Coast, this contractor. And I don't mind saying that because there is, it's on the record, we have been up, up and down sideways and back and forth with them. They were the ones that did 20th Street. They were the ones that did some other El Mig streets. We just had a lot of difficulty. And again, whether that is going to be for this time around, I do not know. However, we will be really, really engaged with quality on our streets this time around. Back, the last time, you know, when they were here, we did not, we, we just didn't look at it as close, but we'll be doing that this time, and they had the same kind of bid and the spread as they gave to Tiff County. And I've talked to Jason Jordan in the county as well, and he had the same type of concerns. Again, maybe they are doing things differently, but I wanted to let you know that we'll be on top of them very, very closely.
Who did, who's done our El Mig money projects in the past?
Reeves Construction's done the last two, done a really good job.
The quality is exceptional.
The quality is great. Since I've been here, it's been East Coast. When I first got here, they were finishing up 20th Street, and for the past three years, we've had Reeves Construction. It was really a shock to see this low bid, but you can't argue with the numbers. They got it that low. It's a good bit of savings.
Generally, you get, you get what you pay for.
Yes.
Well, what I was going to say, hopefully, you, between you watching it on the city side and Jason on the county side, hopefully, they'll, they'll get the message that...
And I've actually...
In the pre-bid, we'll, we'll make sure we would know, because it's...
So, the county is using this group as well?
They are. And again, Jack says it right. I mean, and again, I'm going to give them the benefit of the doubt. What was yesterday is not today, and tomorrow is going to be another day. So, we're going to, in the pre-bid, we'll make sure that we're going to have a, a quality and inspection done, and we're not going to tolerate what we've tolerated in the past. However, what this does, it gives you $100,000 spread, meaning that we've got $100,000 underbid. You could let that slide, or we could put back in some of the roads or some suggestions about maybe other intersections or other lanes that we need to fix in the city of Tifton. Lord have mercy.
That would be my choice.
So, I would recommend that we spend the money, and Jeff, in this pre-bid, we could talk to them about that. The money's there. We could increase the quantities, and let's, let's decide on some of the areas. We've already talked about this, and I'll give you, for instance, if you go out 6th Street, you go over 75, and you're going out, that right-hand lane that just is potholed, it just can't hold up. It's a bad subsurface, taking out that whole stretch of that lane and redoing it. Those type of intersections were improvements.
I was on it today. Please repay.
We've got to do, we've got to fix that.
Is Kent Road, over there by the, by the high schools, that's in the city limits, right? Kent Road?
Which road?
Kent Road?
By the high school? Yes. And we could do some patchwork there. I, I think the, the extra money would be better used finding some smaller areas and fixing the really bad spots, even if in two years we come back and pave the whole road, at least we saved the life of that road for a few more years. That on King Road, yes, is very bad. One lane. We paved that one lane, we can do it for about $15,000, $16,000, 1,200 feet. But Kent Road, that's one that I've actually looked at, that there's some areas we could...
I would love.
Overlay and get it by for a few more years.
Let's, let's do this. If, if you will, if you, and I know each of you run through and you see the potholes after potholes. As soon as it rains, it's out again, we beat them out. We put stuff back in, they beat out. If you will, if you will just mark those down or email those to me, Jeff and I will jump on that If you will, if you will just mark those down or email those to me, Jeff and I will jump on that, because we have, we have a few weeks till we get this done. And we're gonna go ahead and knock those out. So, would you do that, please? And, um, I, we'll make it happen. But I'm suggesting we go ahead and spend the money.
Be careful what you ask for, Pete.
I'm emailing you now.
You got a hundred thousand dollars.
And you gotta remember, we only got about a hundred thousand dollars.
I know, but it's gonna go fast, so I got half week.
And listen, a hundred thousand dollars paves the length of, about this table. Taping is expensive.
Kent Road is a high school road. There's a lot of people use it. Subdivision coming off, um, um,
Well, I know, I know, um, Yeah. And, and they, y'all've done a good job trying to make sure that there's something in each district that's, you know, that's handled, so that all districts are covered.
Mr. Johnny on Third Street, right there, before you get to the body shop right across the street.
Yes.
Horizon Mill, that, right there in that little deli, that section that beats out. There's a, probably from here to the, the door, it's a section that's just given out. Those are the type of areas that I'm, we're really looking for. Because if we could fix it, like Jeff said, we could, we could stabilize the roads for a couple more years.
I mean, yes.
Okay.
So, if you, if y'all will do that, uh, we got, we, you know, a hundred thousand will go in these little, we could get it done. All right. Thank you. Deal.
All right. Excellent. All right. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
All right. Item number six, recommendation and review of a proposed zoning overlay for US Highway eighty-two. Danny Wallace.
As Danny, as Danny makes his way up here, I, I, I would just preface by saying we had some inquiries. Danny had some inquiries about commercial corridors, um, and talking about, uh, where, uh, our ordinances are with regard to businesses. And tonight Danny's gonna take you through, um, just some ideas of an overlay. And again, this is just for discussion purposes. Uh, we wanted to get your feelings on this because we feel, we, we watch. And, and depending on what, what, uh, customers or what we're hearing from the, uh, the industry side, uh, if we move, we, we, we do smart moves. Uh, but if it's more, more detailed and it takes a little, a lot of work, this happens to encompass some sign ordinance work. So, you know that's, it's just heavy. When you talk about sign ordinance, there's a lot to it. So, Danny's gonna take you through just an idea. This is for discussion purposes and, uh, we're gonna try to make it as simple as possible if this is something that you want us to pursue. So, Dan?
Yeah, absolutely. So, if, if you do, uh, wanna move it forward, I haven't even taken a plan and zoning yet. I, I wanted to bring it before the council. So, um, I, I've been approached by, uh, a few businesses along Highway eighty-two. Eighty-two, of course, is a state highway and it intersects I seventy-five. And, um, they came to me and they wanna reach that traffic. And they still wanna keep the purpose of those state highways and draw those visitors. So, they asked me to come up with a way to increase signs, sign sizes. Um, they did ask for an increase in the number of signs and I told them no on that. So, but I looked at this and I've looked at many other community, um, ordinances. I've talked to a few other planners and so I've come up with this very, very rough draft. And this is for discussion, so I want your feedback. I, I, I value that feedback so I can make a good document that makes sense. And I decided to do an overlay, uh, because it's very specific to, to that area. So, so it won't affect the entire city. Um, and so, the idea behind it is, is that, okay, these businesses are asking for this stuff. So, how can I get something and still provide them something? So, I, I put in there for amenities. So, if you, if you want it, our, our sign ordinance would still apply. But if you would like an increase in signage, then you have to give us something, um, amenity for visitors. This could be artwork. It could be sidewalks, walking trails, extra landscaping on top of what we already require, um, to increase that. And it would still have a cap, of course, and it would still, um, it would still fall in line. They would just be allowed to increase their size, not the quantity. All right? So, uh, in doing this, I didn't want it to be just for signs. So, there are other things that we need to take care of. Number one is parking. And that state highway, Highway eighty-two, it's hard to get in and get out. You know, if you need to jump to the next lot, you, you don't need to pull out on eighty-two. So, I put in there about having interparcial driveways sharing, uh, or alley access, um, if that's possible. And reduction of parking and promotion of shared parking. So, that way we can reduce the overall effect of having those, um, large parking lots. People can share them. They can provide us more green space, um, and a, 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 a better, uh, feel for that area. So, I didn't wanna go through this document line by line, so, um, if y'all have any questions, I, I'd be happy to answer them for you. And y'all just consider this.
I, I know it's, this is, there's a lot of information to this. Um, you know, we talked about the business corridor. Do we have to change and, and move with the times? Maybe so. We don't want to create more signage, but we want to possibly put in landscape or not have, um, a business that trade off, not, you don't have to put a parking lot that you could land a plane in. So, uh, there's certain things that, again, the give and take that we could possibly look at if you're interested in, in studying this a little bit. As long as it doesn't infringe on, again, making bigger signs and creating, um, you know, aesthetic, uh, places.
And I'm willing to take that out. I mean, I, I want your, I value your feedback. So.
Well, and I, I've shared with you a little bit, um, my concerns. The, um, you know, we want to give every opportunity to the businesses to be able to attract customers and let folks know that they're there and that kind of thing. My only concern is if we increase the, um, the size of the signs and three hundred square feet's a pretty big sign, then, and all these signs become three hundred square feet, then who's gonna come back and say, well, I really need five hundred square feet? And all of a sudden, everybody's got a billboard in the front for their sign, you know?
Yes.
So, I just wanna make sure that we're not, um, kinda throwing out the baby with the backwater. We want, like I said, we want commerce. We want our businesses to succeed. We wanna give them every opportunity in every manner possible to be as successful as they possibly can. Um, but at the same time, we do have a community to maintain and an aesthetic to maintain. So,
Absolutely.
Um, so I really want the council to read through this very seriously and, and really give this every consideration. And let's have some good debate and some good discussion about it. Um, I, you know, be anxious to see what, you know, what y'all's thoughts are. I do very much like that it's an overlay, that it's not just a blanket across the, across the city, um,
I tried to be strategic. You know, that's, that's in our comprehensive plan, our, our three and five-year plan
Right.
to keep that in urban commercial corridor.
Right, right.
And have its own identity.
Exactly. And, and that's what it is. And that's, that's the, you know, and, and we respect that and, and appreciate that.
Absolutely.
And, uh, again, I don't want it to be perceived that we're not being business friendly or business respectful. But I do want us to balance that with aesthetics and, and how the community will look. I know you made a, a comment a few minutes ago, you know, you don't know what's gonna happen thirty years from now. We need to be mindful of what we're doing now because it will probably be around thirty years from now. So,
Absolutely.
I don't want our children and grandchildren sitting at these tables saying, what in the world did they do? So, uh, so, so do look at this very seriously. Talk to the businesses in the area. Um, let's, you know, I'm gonna check with some of the folks that are out there on, along that, that, um, that corridor. We do have a lot of new businesses coming in, so I know they're anxious to find out what's gonna happen with this. So, um, we're, we're just gonna leave it at that. So, do y'all have any questions or comments? I know, um, there's a lot to consider here. Any?
Maybe we just do some illustrations, 'cause I think it's easier to, to see pictures and what that means. Because we can't do anything that happened in two thousand and eleven.
Yeah.
And if it looks bad, uh, you know, we don't wanna make it look worse. So, maybe we take where the overlay may be, uh, what it could look like
That's a good idea.
or maybe, uh, what, um, what we would allow and give you a, you know, snapshot of, of, you know, what, what.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Good shot. Good shot. Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions, comments for Danny? Um, can we move on? Okay. Thank you, Danny. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, the next item is, um, item number seven under resolutions is the service delivery petition. Um, I do want to, um, you know, as, as everyone knows, we've had a, a lot of discussion about service delivery and, um, our timing on this and, and, uh, making sure that we're doing everything possible to provide the most, um, cost-efficient services in the best quality manner that we possibly can for our citizens and our taxpayers. And I want to let everyone know that we are still working, um, for common ground for services. Um, so that an acceptable Form Two packet could be presented to the county. Um, we wanna make sure that, you know, we're in compliance with DCA, that we're in compliance with state, uh, any state statute that we need to, uh, to address. So, um, I think it's very important that we, um, that we consider, you know, continue to work for that common ground. So, Rob, um, do you wanna take it from here and kinda go over everything for us and?
Uh, Mayor and Council, as you know, uh, the June thirty deadline to file with the, um, Department of Community Affairs has passed, as we anticipated. Once that deadline has passed, the sanctions have now been imposed, uh, by, uh, by the state. The next step in the process is to file what we call a petition for mandatory mediation. And what this resolution's about is authorizing myself, as well as this firm of Smith, Welch, Webb and White, to file this petition in court seeking mandatory mediation. Now, basically, that does two things. It brings the parties back together for mediation process. But it's also overseen by a judge. A judge who can make sure that everybody is negotiating in good faith. That's a good thing. The other thing that filing the petition does, it will enable us to go to the judge, once he is appointed, to seek an order holding the sanctions in abeyance, retroactive July one, as we work through the process. So, what we're looking to do is file the petition, ask the court to, uh, require mandatory mediation, bring the parties back together, sign an order, holding these sanctions in abeyance, as we work through the process. And as you said, Mayor, hopefully find some common ground and hopefully reach an agreement through the process.
Okay. Using the term abeyance, that's a, that's a legal term. So, find what that means so that everybody understands.
What, what that means is that it'll, you know, the sanction will not, no longer be imposed
Okay.
until, you know, as we work through the process.
Right.
Um, and I, I feel confident the judge will do that. Uh, and again, I think what is good about, uh, the petition for mandatory mediation, uh, actually the, the first session, all the council, all the commissioners will require to be at that session. So, it gets everybody together. And again, it's gonna be overseen by a judge, making sure everybody's negotiating in good faith. And hopefully, as we work through that process, find that common ground and reach an agreement.
Well, I know, you know, in my conversations, um, with all of the council, it, I think all of the council is very, um, interested in that common ground. And something that, um, you know, we can, uh, we can come to terms with and, and through some, um, through some good discussion and open discussion, uh, hopefully come to some resolution.
Uh, Mayor, I know this is a little bit, you know, unusual, a little out of order, but out of necessity, because we want to get this petition filed and get this order, because we have to get a judge outside the circle appointed, um, and get this order holding these sanctions, uh, in advance. I'd like to go ahead and vote on this tonight, uh, since it is a matter of necessity and, uh, ask that you all do take that up tonight.
Okay. Um, what I think would be, um, beneficial, I think that we would need to go into executive session at the end of this meeting, have some discussion and then come out of executive session and vote at that time.
That'll be fine.
If that's acceptable to everybody so that we can
For legal matters.
For legal matters. Mm-hmm. Are y'all good with that?
Yeah.
So, so we'll come back to that after the, after we run through the rest of the agenda, if that's okay with everybody. Unless everyone has any objections, that's what we'll do.
That'll be fine. Any, any questions?
All right. Any questions? Okay. All right. Thank you, Rob. Uh, let's see. All right. Jessica, we've got a couple of applications here. Um, a resolution for a new alcohol license for a new business. That's exciting, for Yorpi located at twenty-two oh-one US Highway forty-one North. And, uh, you, anything you need to tell us about any of these applications? They look pretty straightforward.
Yeah. Yorpi is going, um, besides the Harvick. It is a new location. They're just requesting, uh, beer and wine consumption on premises.
Okay.
Um, the owner's information is in there and
Right.
It's good. Uh, staff has recommended a permit for that.
Okay.
Um, and the Route eighty-two is a current license. Um, that one is on eighty-two. It's out by churches. And they're just adding one, so they aren't available. I said they're just a neighborhood area.
Okay. Gotcha. All right. Any questions of Jessica on those applications? Like I said, they're pretty straightforward, uh, and those are in your packet if you need to review those. Um, all right. That's all we really had for our specific agenda items. Pete, you wanna go over City Manager report?
Thank you. Um, just, I wanted to share with you, uh, this is exciting. Um, Jeff reported this morning that, uh, we approved a capital project last year and we're gonna be doing, um, a GIS application for the cemetery. Uh, and that is scheduled to start here real soon. And what that means, uh, what that means is every plot, every space, every name will be logged and all this will be put in, into an interactive map where you could see where the lots are, who's buried where, where all the vacant lots are, where the future lots are, et cetera. So, we don't have to go back on, and taking out maps, uh, that, you know, are, you know, really, really old and we're guessing at this. So, you know, will it be perfect? No, but at least we'll have the database, uh, done. This will actually be available on our website, so families could go actually and pull their plots up and see where they're located, what the markings are, what the, you know, what area it's in. So, this is gonna be something special that, um, our cemetery has never, our community has never seen. If you have a burial plot in, in our cemetery, this is gonna be really neat, um, for, for you to, to see and keep track of, of, of the property and, and where, um, loved ones are, are buried. So.
Along that line, I know we've talked about this in the past. Um, is there any way to determine, and Rob, this is, this is a real estate sort of question. Within the, um, sort of the older, original part of the cemetery where there are spaces that obviously someone's purchased, we're not sure, you know, probably purchased years and years and years ago, is there any way to, do you, you know what I'm gonna ask? If they're not going to use them, could they be sold?
There is. And actually, Mayor, I'm, it might've been four or five years ago that I looked at that. But there is a process that you go through
Okay.
in order to, to declare, uh, a plot, maybe abandoned, might
Right.
lack of a better word. But I'm, I'm confident that there is a process that you can go through to get that done. Four or five years ago that I looked at it, but I'll look at it again.
Okay. Because we've had several, I've, I've had people ask, you know, they maybe have, you know, you know, family members or they wanna be buried with, you know, with, in a, in kind of a family plot, but there's no more space there. So, um, within their lot, but there's empty spaces around them that, that, so we could check on that. So, I'm sorry if you don't mean.
I will, Mayor, 'cause like I said, that, that was, you know, front and center four or five years ago.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, thanks. So, that is, uh, that's exciting for cemetery. I can't wait to show you, uh, the first, first round of that. Uh, the second, um, item that I'd like to share with you is the update to your Mayor and Council retreat, the goals and objectives. It's hard to believe, you know, we're only, almost at six-month mark, uh, when we met and set the goals for this year. Kind of interesting, I went through and, and marked, uh, those that are completed. Uh, you know, the first page is progressive work in South Tifton, uh, and, and you could see what's ongoing, what's completed. And if it, there's nothing there, we still have to work towards that. Um, the second page is code enforcement, where will we pick up that, uh, next? Long-term plan for solid waste and landfill. We, we are in process for a couple of those, but design standards. You could see a lot of them, uh, where we have shifted, uh, and we have completed a lot of that. Same thing with boards and authorities. So, we're working, um, ve- very diligently where we can. And obviously, this whole last four months have really slowed us down, so we, we've not been able to accelerate through some as we'd like to. But I wanted to bring to your attention, um, the, next to the last is the Police Department. We spent a lot of time talking about that, about community policing and, uh, the mayor had, uh, spearheaded the human trafficking training and, and was involved in the committees. That was done very, very successful. And I understand now the GMA is using that as a three-hour training block as part of a, a course throughout the state for other governments. So, uh, that, that has been completed. But Chief and I have talked about a lot of these issues, the bike patrol, um, increased more out about foot patrol being visible in neighborhoods. And then, uh, we wanted to work on changing the perception in all areas of town. It's kinda interesting, you know, where we are as a community, as a state and as a nation. You know, we, we had our meetings. Wes, um, helped spearhead that. And it was interesting to me, as I reflected, a lot of the comments, you as a, a elected body talked about this as your goals and what you wanted to see. And that's really interesting. Uh, you know, here, back in January, we, today's a whole different day. And we were talking about what we need to be talking about back then. Very, again, very admirable and we're going to work hard on this, uh, but right down to creating a map with current zones per district, uh, with officers, um, and make, keeping the community informed better, knowing, um, who the officers are, uh, where we're engaged and how we're making a difference. So, it, it was kinda neat to see that. I wanted to share that with you, um, as, as we move, uh, into a complete, completing more objectives. So, again, this is just for you. It's an update, um, and, uh, we're, um, hopefully, we're gonna get into some new areas and, uh, start, you know, and focusing on some of the objectives that we haven't made it to just yet. So, uh, lastly, and Dana should hopefully turn around the corner, but maybe not, um, uh, we did get our, um, digest numbers in and I wanted to
There she is.
Okay. Come on, Dana. Uh, Dana's been working with Chad and House Pass is out for you. You take a quote. Uh, she has worked with, um, Chad, Alexander. Uh, we did, um, get the, um, five-year history into the paper, which was a Uh, she has worked with, um, Chad, uh, Alexander, uh, we did, um, get the, uh, five-year history into the paper, which was a requirement, uh, and Dana is satisfied with the numbers, and I wanted her, just to give you a peek, next meeting, um, no action is really taken, we'll, we'll adopt the milage rate. So I wanted her to give you a, a quick, um, just, just a quick update as, as we go into next meeting, so Dana?
Okay, okay.
Yeah, this year the tax digest, um, came in good, like it did last year, we had actually a little bit of growth,
not a huge amount, but a little bit, and with all the calculations, and you, then you had your taxes exempted, exemptions, and your, um, reevaluations, all the numbers Chad sent me, we actually come up with the roll, rollback rate at nine point seven two six, so currently it's nine point seven three one, so that's five cents less than this year, and it's only like a difference of eighteen hundred dollars if we didn't roll back, it's not enough money really to worry about, so, that's what we're going with, um, but overall, we still have an increase of sixty-seven thousand dollars with this year's budget.
Kinda interesting, if you look back over the last three years, uh, we, you know, digest grew in two thousand and eighteen, grew one point nine six percent, twenty nineteen, it grew one point eight eight percent, and now we're back at one point nine six. You know, to tell you the truth, if you look around the state, um, and where we are as a community, to have almost a two percent growth, uh, in, in what, you know, the challenging times, that's a pretty good thing for us, and, um, we wanna keep on growing, uh, you know, from a tax digest, but it allows you, uh, to understand that we have, you know, a little more, little more monies this year, but we are stable, uh, when it comes to our budgets and our revenues, so, it's a, it's a great thing for, for us.
That's excellent, that's very good.
So really, I was really impressed.
So next meeting, you'll be adopting milage rate, Jessica will have to have that on the, uh, agenda, so I wanted to give you a, a, just a quick glimpse on that. Chad, if he, if, if something changes with the numbers, we'll certainly update you then, but I wanted to make sure you have that.
Yeah, these numbers come in Friday, he gave me what we needed Friday morning, so.
Excellent, okay, any questions of Dana on these, these numbers on the digest? Okay.
That's all I have.
Alright, perfect, alright, thank you, thank you for that report, Pete. Alright, we'll go through Mayor and Council comments very quickly, and then we'll go into an executive session. Wes, you wanna start us off?
You know, believe it or not, I don't have anything to say today.
What? Would you please put that in the record, Jessica, that Wes had nothing to say today, okay. Jack, how about you?
I'll take your time, Wes. Um, mine is, is something, you, you know, I've been hollering it, and hollering it, and hollering it, and Wes is, knows what I'm gonna say, and the mayor knows what I'm gonna say, but it, it's around COVID and these cases, and masks, and you go in the stores, and half these people, or three, four of these people act like it's twenty nineteen. There's no concern, they don't worry about running right up on you, till I tell them to get away, they have no mask on, they don't follow arrows, they just don't care. If you watch the news, and, and the news is real, cases are going up, look at, look at this, this states, the other day, Georgia was fourth in, in the United States of, of number of case increases. There's only one way to stop this thing, to stop the spread, and masks work, regardless of what you might see on Facebook, masks work. Listen to the medical experts, they are not lying to you, they absolutely work, and the lack of concern in Tifton, and I was glad to see Savannah just said, heck with what the governor said, they implemented, uh, a mask, uh, ordinance, Athens Park County has now done the same thing. And I can appreciate the governor wanting to open up businesses, and I'm certainly not calling on, you know, any kind of shutdown or something, but let's keep the businesses open, but wear masks, you can do both, but we're gonna keep on, and you see in some of these other states, Florida I saw, they're having to shut some things back down again, because of these increases. Well, who wants to do that? I don't wanna do that, but if everybody would wear a mask, you would not have to do that. So, to say, people gonna do the right thing, guess what? People ain't gonna do the right thing, that's, that's been clear, you know, so, we have the click it or ticket with seatbelts, well, the saying now is mask it or cast it, and it might not be you, cause you're young, but you got older, I'm looking at you, Wes, you're young, but those older ones that you go home to aren't so young. And, I mean, this thi- this thing is just, I mean, it, it's just serious, and so I'll, I'll hush, but, you know, I practice what I preach, I don't like my hair this long,
We don't, we don't either, Jack.
You don't either?
No, we don't either.
You know, alright, but I just don't, I just don't go out, not until we get some kind of control over this thing, and we're not there yet, so.
Okay, thank, thank you for that, we, we respect that very much, thank you. MJ?
Uh, no major comments, just glad to be here, glad to see y'all faces, uh, I agree with Jack, we're still in this thing, y'all, you know, it's not over yet.
Yeah.
You know, and I just want everybody to continue to show up in him, you know, he's real, and it is real, you know? You might be young, and you might feel like you can't catch it and spread it or whatever, but I got folks at my house, well, not at my house, but in my family that I know that, they call it, it might not look good.
Right.
And so, you know, you gotta think about others, you know, I, I don't care to wear a mask, you know, but I wear my mask everywhere I go, you know, so, uh, just still be mindful, we're still in this thing, and we're still fighting COVID nineteen, so, uh, but, uh, it's a great day in the city of Tipton.
There you go, thank you. Johnny?
I'm good.
You good? Okay, alright, um, and I'll, I'll wrap things up, um, I see Bruce Green in the, uh, sitting back here with us, Bruce, we just want to express our, um, sympathy and our condolences on the passing of your mother, and just want you to know that you've been in our prayers, and your family's been in our prayers, and, um, I did not have the opportunity to meet your mother, but I know she must have been a fine woman, to have raised us as nice a son as she did, so, um, just know that we've been thinking about you, and very sorry for your loss. So, um, so, alright, uh, that, yes?
When y'all, when the judge gets with y'all, and y'all start discussing the services, can that be filmed and televised, or is that?
I'm gonna defer to the attorney, I don't know.
Uh, uh, go on.
It's gonna be part of mediation process, which will not be subject to, you know, it will not be open to public.
Did you hear that?
Uh, I think, like, here.
The mediation process is not open to the public.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, okay, alright, uh, we will need a motion to, um, go into executive session, so, um, if someone would please make that motion. Alright, we have second, second, alright, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alright, we'll take about a sixty-second break, and, uh, then we will go in-